Like to thank everyone for coming out. We are still waiting on a few commissioners to join us before we get going. So just hang tight for a minute or two. Thanks. Right, well, we have a quorum, but we're still awaiting Mr. Soliates and Ms. Russell.
I just texted Lyle and he hasn't gotten back to me. It takes about four minutes ago. I haven't heard anything.
Gotcha. We've got messages going out as well.
The chairman is on his way. He will be joining us momentarily.
Wonderful. We haven't had a 5:00 PM work session in so long. It's a little bit out of sorts.
Yeah, I really miss them.
You do?
I missed the pizza.
In the effort to be productive, can I ask a question while we're waiting? I thought he was here. There he is.
Apologies for the delay. My brain is full of turkey and not budgets. It's very strange. Where were we, please?
We just, we were just getting organized here. If you want to call the group to order, you can turn it over if there's no announcements to Ms. Hamel and we can get rolling with the CIP discussion.
I called this planning commission work session to order. Apologies for the delay. Ms. Hamel, please take us away.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me at your meeting tonight. We're here to talk about the 2327 Capital Improvement Program. The materials, I think, have been sent to all of the commissioners as well as council, and they also can be found on the city's website, both on the budget webpage under work sessions and also the planning commission's webpage, I believe, as well. So with that, if we could move on to the next slide.
Are you seeing slides?
You're not.
No. Mr. Trail, are you able to put the slides up for us? Oh, thank you so much.
There we go. So just as a brief overview, what is a capital improvement program? We've talked about this before, some who haven't. It's basically a five-year financing plan that contains infrastructure-type projects that usually cost more than $50,000. They're generally non-recurring and non-operational, and they generally have a useful life of five years or more. Next slide, please. So in constructing the CIP plan for this year, we did so with a focus on several factors. One largely being the school reconfiguration project. As you'll recall, if you followed the CIP from last year, we had a placeholder in for that project at $50 million. And based on council's direction from a meeting in October, that has now been increased from $50 to $75 million. The funding has been moved up from FY25 to FY24. We also know that in doing this, that there will be a need for significant revenue enhancements to afford the additional debt service that will be required. We know that our debt capacity will be exhausted for some period of time. And in order to reach this amount of funding, we reprogrammed some dollars that were previously authorized to be funded by bonds to the school reconfiguration project. Specifically, we have reallocated $18.25 million from the West Main Street project and $5 million from the Seventh Street parking garage. Those dollars have now been reprogrammed to help with the increase from the 75 to the 50 on the school project. We also looked at this CIP with an idea of spending down available balances. We have many CIP accounts that have ongoing balances, and we're looking to work on those accounts and get things moving and get some dollars off the books. So the net effect of all of these factors is that any additions to the CIP required offsetting reductions in a different area. Next slide, please. So in taking a look, here's the five-year plan. The first column showing the adopted budget. 23 through 27 are the current draft of what would be proposed. Keeping in mind that we legally only appropriate the first year, so in this case, council will be legally appropriating FY23. Years 24 through 27 would remain as a financing plan. You'll see that the three priority areas with the most funding continue to be education, affordable housing, and transportation and access in that order. This chart, you may remember from last year, looks very similar. The basic change here being again, the increase for the school project. You'll also notice on this table that in every year, our revenues must match our expenditures. And in funding the CIP, we have two large funding sources. One is cash from the general fund, which that amount is determined by a longstanding budget guideline of the city, which is to contribute at least 3% of the general fund budget to the CIP as cash, or commonly referred to as PGO. And then the largest funding source that we rely on for the CIP is bonds. You'll notice that year FY2027 has a zero and it's highlighted in yellow. As we have talked about the CIP and we have talked about the fact that we will be reaching our bond capacity limits. When we talk about bond capacity, there are two ways to look at that. One is the legal bond or debt capacity that the state defines, which is basically defined as 6% of a locality's assessed value. In this case, for the city, that would, at last check, I believe that was roughly about $684 million. And then second is the debt capacity, which is in keeping with what the locality can actually afford and in keeping with our policy. So when we speak to debt capacity in the light of the CIP, what we are speaking to is the amount of debt that we could issue that would keep us within our 10% annual debt service limit, which basically means that per policy, our annual debt service should not exceed more than 10%, with a target of 9% of the total general fund budget. So under this scenario, beginning in FY2027, we will have exceeded the 10% policy. And current projections show that that would extend for probably another two to three years beyond 2027, in which case we might not be at nine, but we would definitely be over our, I'm sorry, we might not be at 10, but we would definitely be over our 9% target. Next slide, please. So when we talk about the cash or the debt that goes to the general fund, the pie chart that you see here is really a breakdown of how all of the city's tax revenues are spent. And it's hard, generally, we talk about these in isolation, but it's important to keep in mind that they really are very integrated, and the decision on one does have an impact on the other. So again, this pie chart is a depiction of all of the categories in which tax revenue is spent. So in talking about the revenues for the CIP, we talk about debt service, which is shown here with the piece of the pie that's sort of sticking out a bit at roughly just under 5%. This was for the '22 budget, was roughly just under 5%. Additionally, the cash contribution that goes to the CIP is a small portion of the infrastructure and transportation part of the pie. And so as these pieces of the pie continue to get bigger, then the other pieces of the pie in the general fund tend to have to get smaller. So this is just sort of a depiction of how they relate and the funding of those things relate and the decisions that we make, what the impact is.
I see a question from Mr. Mitchell.
If it's appropriate, I can wait, or if it's appropriate, I'll ask. So the debt service payment, that is that that comes out of the capital budget? As opposed to the operating budget?
The debt service payment comes out of the operating budget. So this piece of the pie, this pie here represents the general fund expenses. And I'm sorry, I see now from your question, this is a little bit misleading, the title in the pie, but the debt service payment actually comes from the general fund and is paid through tax revenue.
Cool. Thank you.
Next slide, please.
I did, I'm sorry. Could you go back one more slide? Go back to the first slide. I have one more question. And it was relating to financial services. What exactly is that?
Financial services are finance, the treasurer's office, the commissioner of revenue, those types of services.
Also staffing, I believe.
Staffing and their operating budget, yeah.
Staffing of the financial services group, right?
Correct, yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
So when we talk about bonds, the city is fortunate enough to be AAA bond rated. We are actually part of a very small group of localities that have that rating. It is the premier marker of a locality's financial stability and strength. We've maintained this rating from Standard and Poor's since 1964 and from Moody's since 1973. A credit rating is basically an independent review. The reviewer being the rate of the credit rating agencies, in this case, Standard and Poor's and Moody's. They come in and do a review of the city, and they assess the ability and the willingness of the city's ability to be able to repay the debt. The great thing about a AAA is it allows the city to borrow funds at virtually the lowest possible borrowing cost, which means that more of our dollar goes towards the project and less towards interest. And so there are four factors in this rating that are basically taken into account. One is the economy, which basically looks at our demographics, our employment base, our property values, and the composition of our taxpayer. Secondly, they look at our management. What are our policies? What are our procedures? What does our strategic plan look like? But more carefully, they look at our ability to not only have these things in place, but achieve those targets and actually adhere to our policies. I'm sorry, can you go back? And thirdly, they look at our financials. So in addition to our clean, unqualified audits that the city receives every year, the rating agencies will review our budget practices. They review our financial statements, our investments. They look at our fund balances and they compare all kinds of ratios and calculations to see how we compare to our peers. And then finally, they review our outstanding, our debt profile. What is our outstanding debt? What are our future needs? And what do our obligations look like? So again, a AAA just indicates how strong financially the city is.
I see another question from Mr. Mitchell.
Another question. How will, as the rating agencies review the city operations, will the high turnover of senior-level management impact our bond rating?
So again, they do look at management as part of that analysis. To date, that has not really been at the forefront of a lot of those conversations, keeping in mind that the single most goal of a bond rating is to assess our ability to pay our debt. And so there has not been an instance to date where the things that are happening at the management level have affected any of that. We have still been paying our debt. We've still been paying our bills. We've been adhering to our policies. And so while it just has not really been a source of concern at this point.
Thanks. So my question is, do we have guidance on exactly what they're looking for in that debt category in terms of outstanding debt? In terms of percent of budget going to debt service? Like, for example, is that that 9% goal and 10% limit policy, is that coming from the rating agencies? Or is that an internal goal in order to do what we think the rating agencies want us to do?
So all of that, actually. The one thing is that the 10% policy with a target of nine is actually a city policy. That was a policy adopted by council. It was also adopted at the recommendation with our financial advisor. In the not-so-distant past, we actually had a much more conservative debt policy, which was 8%. And in anticipation of a ramped-up CIP and future debt needs, we went back to the rating agency and said, hey, we know we're going to have a need for more debt, and we are considering raising our policy from eight to 10. And in order to do that, on the offset, we also increased our fund balance policy, our reserve fund balance policy, and so we were able to do it. So the policy is the city's policy. Could we change it? Sure. What would be the impact? Again, I think that would be something that we would assess with our financial advisor and compare that relative to our peers and other AAA bond rating agencies. But in terms of the debt, it really is our entire profile. And so anything that is considered debt gets lumped in here. The only exception is that because we do have self-supporting utility funds, gas, water, wastewater, stormwater, the debt for those four utilities are considered self-supporting, and so they are sort of set outside of, and they are not part of that policy.
And is that specifically our utility funds and not our other enterprise funds?
That is correct.
Is it fair to say their revenue is also not our revenue for debt purposes?
That is correct. Any other questions on this? Okay, moving on to the next slide. So as we look at, this chart attempts to show you, as I mentioned, the CIP is a five-year plan, and we adopt the first year of the plan, and the years two through five are more of a roadmap for what's to come. And I wanted to take just a few minutes to compare what the plan looked like for '23 in the adopted budget last year versus what the plan looks like in the current draft that's before you. You'll see that most of the categories did not change. In fact, in total, we had, in '22, we had planned to spend 26, just over 26 million for '23. The current draft is now at just under 23 million, so that's a reduction of about $3.6 million. Largely, that is the result of reallocating the parking garage, $5 million of the parking garage dollars from the parking garage project, which was supposed to come online in '23, to now the school project, which goes online in '24. But just itemizing some of those changes, in the public safety section, there was $1.2 million added to address the construction cost increases for the planned bypass fire station. And in doing so, we also reduced, we had some accounts that were set up that were intended to establish a pot of money to replace portable radios and mobile data terminals several years from now, when they are due. It's quite costly because of the numbers. It's a quite costly replacement, and so we had set aside replacement dollars for that. We have reduced that slightly by $111,000 over the five years. And so, I'm sorry, in '23, I apologize. Transportation and access, we again reprogrammed the 5 million, or 5.6 million from the new parking deck. 5 million went to the school reconfiguration project. 638,000 has been added for repairs, structural repairs that will be needed for the Marcus Street parking garage. Additionally, $250,000 was reduced from the annual paving amount, and $50,000 was added for the historic district and entrance corridor design guidelines. Under Parks and Rec, we did add a few line items here. First of all, we reduced their lump sum account by about $100,000. We added $150,000 for a comprehensive master plan. This would be to look at Parks and Rec programs. This is not the normal master, the park per se, master planning process. But this is more of a programmatic master plan. We added just over $45,000 for drainage repairs to the Oakwood Cemetery. $50,000 was added for an ash tree removal program. And $92,500 were added for city and county projects, which are joint projects at both Ivy Creek and Darden Town. $350,000 was added for a McIntyre drainage issue or correction that has been flagged by DEQ. And $42,000 was added with additional dollars for a complete roof, for additional dollars in '24 for a complete roof replacement on the Key Recreation Center.
See a question from Mr. Mitchell.
The question, I was anticipating her getting down to the next slide. If you could ask me again, once you get down to four miles. But, but the question about Parks and Rec, the 150 that we reduced, what did we lose? That $100,000, what did Parks and Rec lose when you took that out?
So I think Mr. Garber is on and he can probably address that better than me. The lump sum, the Parks and Rec lump sum account is established for maintenance types of things. It was funded at 300,000 this year. It was reduced, I believe, in '20 or '21 because of COVID. And there was a hope to get that back up to $400,000. But with the other additions, we had to look at keeping it level this year. And I don't, Vic, did you have anything else to add?
Let's see, this is Vic. I think you did a nice job. Basically, it provides us flexibility for those non-budgeted items that pop, basically pop up on a quarterly basis, whether it's a small roof leak, irrigation, an aquatic system goes bad. Basically, it gives us the flexibility to maintain what we have and keep the service delivery at a high level. So we normally do ask for 400 this year in order to get the comprehensive master plan. It has been reduced from 400 to 300,000.
I think you're telling me that we, you and me and the board are happy with the trade-off. We at least get the master plan done. So we're happy to trade this off. So accurate.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I've got lots of questions about the next four or five bullets regarding housing. So I'll wait until Ms. Kell finishes her whole housing discussion, then I'll ask the questions if it's okay with you. Sir.
Very good. Please proceed, Ms. Emma.
Okay, next slide, please. So what are the key messages here? Again, this is a slide that I think we showed last year when we first started talking about this. You know, strategic focus. We believe that this CIP focuses on council's key priorities. Education, affordable housing, transportation and access. That's where the largest dollars, roughly 90% of all the dollars going to the CIP are allocated to those three priorities. Affordability. As presented, this plan is not affordable without significant revenue enhancements. The plan put before, put before you has debt service basically doubling from just over 10 million to just over $20 million within a very short period of time, about four years. And so, you know, going back to the piece of that pie, that piece for debt service continues to get bigger, which would shrink the other pieces. Reallocations. You know, this is perhaps an opportunity, just as we did with West Main, just as we did with the parking garage. Perhaps we can go back and look at funds that have been committed, but that have not been spent in previous plans and determine if they're still needed or if they can be reallocated. What do the future needs look like? Again, as we talk about, you know, exceeding our debt capacity, I've quoted this before to sort of spending your limit on your credit card. The CIP as currently stands will be putting our credit card back in our pocket to sit for a while. As we talked about, '27 would only be projects, and I missed this point on the prior slide. So, and the one where there was no bond proceeds, FY '27, you'll notice that there was only cash contribution to the CIP. I basically, in that effort, for sake of example, then the only projects that would be able to be funded in those years are what we could afford with the cash transfer. And so for sake of example, I basically put those dollars into the recurring, or in the case of like Friendship Court and other commitments for housing, I allocated those dollars there. Of course, that would be subject to future conversations and reallocation. But the story is still the same. There would be no way to add anything new beyond what we could afford with cash in '27, probably '28, '29, and maybe into '30. So what do our future needs look like? Is everything captured here? And then our limited reserves. So under the scenario that we talked about last year, we talked about cash equivalents. And even with the 10 cent tax increase that we talked about previously, that was making an assumption that we were going to deplete all of our debt service reserves as well. So with the significant tax increase, we are depleting our debt service reserves and our debt capacity.
How are you asking me to?
You have your hand up. I thought you might have a question.
Oh, yeah. Why, I do. I think, Ms. Hamel and who's ever dropping slides, could you go back one slide? Slide seven, I think I left my hand up. Ms. Hamel, I think I distracted you. And by distracting you, I didn't allow you to talk about the housing stuff, like the housing affordable stuff, the $925,000 and all that stuff. And so you skipped that because I distracted you. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about all the housing fund stuff. And the reason I'm asking you to do this, two questions I've got about that. One question I've got about that is the $925,000. Is that staffing expenses or is that actual housing rehabilitation? Are we actually improving infrastructure with that money? The other second question I've got relating to all those housing bullets relates to the $10 million a year that was recommended by the consultants that we spend on our housing plan. And if you do the math, these things add up to 7.3 million dollars as opposed to $10 million. So I'm wondering what staff's thinking is about that or if I have misinterpreted what you're presenting.
No, thank you for your question. So I will also, I think Mr. Agafuna is on and can help with this as well, but I'll start. So the $925,000 that, $25,000 that's listed here, that is for CAF. So those are the competitive dollars that people can apply for. And Alex can talk about that in a little more detail. The $900,000 here is for actual housing vouchers. That was a commitment, a multi-year commitment that has been made that is remaining intact. Of course, you know, everyone is aware of the Friendship Court project as well as CRHA. With regard to the $10 million commitment, the CIP is not the only funding source and does not have to be the only funding source for our housing commitment. There are also assistance programs and things such as CHAP, the tax relief programs. Those are all funded through, in the general fund, in a different piece of the pie, if you will.
That's really helpful. I totally missed that we weren't funding the $10 million out of the CIP fund. I would love, I'd really appreciate if Alex could talk to what we're going to do with the $925,000. Because my worry is it's all about people infrastructure as opposed to physical infrastructure. And we need, I think we need that money to go to rehab and things like that.
Well, good evening, commissioners. The $925,000, it's the annual CIP allocation for CAF, the Affordable Housing Fund. That is the fund we use to fund notice or funding availability when we request a request for proposals from the public. That is the money we use to provide funding for approved applications. That's what that $925,000 stands for.
I'm sorry. So that money is not for staffing purposes, it is actually to do rehabilitation or the infrastructure work as opposed to staffing. It's actually, thank you. That's what I was trying to get at. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Rory, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually, just a follow-up on Hosea's thing. I think it might be helpful to get a list of what CAF funds have been, like the $925,000 for this fiscal year, for example, have been allocated to. But my question, if you could flip to the slide that had reallocation in it. Right, I guess you don't really actually need to. So I have a question about what reallocations have been done. So, or what they are exactly. So my understanding was that reallocations were for when previous CIPs have put money or authorized bonds into an account. And those bonds or that money is sitting there as either cash or authorized but not issued bonds. So for example, you know, West Main had something like $20 million that we had authorized, but we hadn't issued yet and started the project. And council said, let's de-authorize that and that lets us reallocate that money, right? And so, and so for the garage, I think in the previous couple fiscal years, we have put $3 million in authorized but not issued bonds into that account. And so you mentioned that the garage has been reallocated. So is that $3 million no longer in that account?
So a couple of things I want to unpack there. First of all, starting with your beginning of your comment, we never, ever, ever sell bonds on a project that hasn't started yet. So when we go to the market to sell bonds, we sell those on a cash-based need, which means that the project is already well underway and is guaranteed to be completed within that 24 months. Or those dollars, at least the portion that we've sold, will be spent within the 24 months. That's an IRS regulation for tax-exempt bonds. So I just want to clear up the conception that we sold bonds and we're kind of sitting on it. We don't do that. Second of all, to your specific question, there is still money that has been out, that $3 million that was previously allocated to the parking garage is still there. And it is, in addition to that, this proposed budget adds another 1.3 million to that. Keeping in mind, we still have contractual obligations to the county for parking specifically related to the courts project. Those discussions are still underway. I think we've, you know, it's somewhat been decided we are not moving forward at this point with the parking garage, but we do have to address those obligations. And so until such time, we know that that's settled and what they are, we're recommending that these dollars stay put. At what point we know what that is and we know what those obligations are, then staff would make a recommendation to council for any additional money that's left there would then again be reallocated to something else.
So is the anticipation that the cost of, well, I mean, at the county's option, converting the surface lot into a county-only parking lot or converting the first part of the Marcus Street Garage into county court parking, those could potentially consume up to $4.3 million that we've allocated for it? And that's why we're keeping it there?
So I think that, you know, I'll let Mr. Engel weigh in. He's much closer to the details than me, but I think it's fair to say we don't know exactly what that's going to cost at this point. And in an effort to be conservative, to make sure that we can meet those obligations, this is what we're recommending we set aside at this point. Chris, did you have anything else to add?
No, you, no, I'm sorry. You covered it well, Chrissy. We just don't know at this point. As soon as we know, then those funds will be eligible for reallocation at that time.
Do we have any ideas or like a range of uncertainty of how much putting up court parking only signs kicked off?
We don't have any specifics right now. We're in the midst of conversation with the county about the fact that we're not going to build a structure and what the agreement leaves them with regard to their options and trying to figure out what's going to work best for both parties.
Is there any possibility that you will go further than what is contractually obligated under that agreement? And for example, tear down the two businesses that are there with this money in order to offer additional circuits parking to incentivize them not to use the garage?
I think everything's an option at the moment.
Ms. Russell, I had a hand up for you. Are you still, do you still have something on your mind?
I was just going to reiterate the desire to see the breakdown on that. The 900 or so thousand for the
CAF.
CAF, because it was confusing to me that rehab had been zeroed out specifically. Maybe there's something in that breakdown.
Yes, I think the rehab was part of a change that happened with the '21 budget. And it was all combined under the one umbrella.
Have Mr. Sanders a hand up?
So the CAF for FY '22 has not been released yet, so there's nothing to report in the way of any allocation. Those funds will be available when we release that in January, late January, hopefully. Where we tied that to the HRNA analysis work that they are performing at this time to evaluate prior 10 years of investment and allow that to inform us on any changes. So we'll get some recommendations on how to better expend the funds and/or even contract the funds so that we get exactly what we're looking for as a return on that investment.
Thank you. Ms. Robb?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. The first one about the school funding, the reconfiguration funding. And we have, we're looking at, I think it was 2024, taking out the giant $62 million. And I was wondering, based on what you said, is it, I was wondering why it was not phased? And is the expectation that the project would be built within two years and complete? I'll start with that.
Yeah, so the project will be phased. And I think that the architects are working on what that looks like. It is all currently shown in the CIP as one lump sum in one year with a small amount in FY '23 and the majority of the 72 and a half million in '24. The end result is it will be phased, but maybe over three or four years. So it doesn't really change our message because we will be signing a contract for $75 million. And so even if we, we will structure our bond sales to be more reflective of our drawdowns. But we have to have a plan in place to pay for the total. So, you know, we've talked about what does this look like in terms of tax increase? And how will we time that and what will we do? And all of that is yet to be determined. But at the end of the day, if we sign a contract, we have to have plans in place for how we will pay for the total.
Okay. Following up, I guess on that same topic, if we exhaust our bond capacity and something comes up, like a lot of these additional expenses we have are unexpected, you know, expenses, like the HVAC or roof replacement, things like that. How do we expect to handle, you know, those unexpected things?
You know, so for things like HVAC and those types of things, they are the accounts that I referred to that are more of the annual recurring. So in '27, when I talked about how I allocated the cash on the expenditure side, it is addressing that. But to your point, But to your point, our ability to address those would be very limited. And again, we would have to be relying on cash to do that.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yeah, I just echo Mr. Robb's concern. We have a major disaster and we've outspent our debt capacity. We have a problem. But the, I want to go back to, you probably answered the question, but I got so caught up on the to nine hundred and twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar question that I may not have heard it clearly. So again, council a few weeks back approved, voted to support the recommendation from the consultants to put ten million dollars into the housing plan. But as I do the math, I only see seven point three million dollars in 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 the housing plan. And I get that from looking at page four of your document and page two of your document, your spreadsheet, your spreadsheet. Um, what happened to the other, what happened to the delta between ten million and seven point three million? Is it just not affordable or?
No, it's that the whole idea that the CIP doesn't have to be the only source of funds for the housing.
I'm sorry. Yep.
Oh, no, that's fine.
You nailed it. You you did tell us that. I'm sorry. I just didn't write it down. My bad. I'll write it down. Thank you.
Mr. Bob?
Sorry. Yeah, my other question actually originally was, I'm kind of continuing that parking conversation, and I just wonder if, you know, we could better use that money now instead of sitting around for a potential parking solution and find that money later on when we know what we need to do. I was just throwing that out there.
Yeah, so Mr. Engel can also address our timeframe, but our timeframe with the county is fairly soon.
Ms. Engel, good, can you?
Uh, yes, the county's working on their their plans for the renovation of the building now. I think twenty twenty-four is when it is expected to come online. We don't, as mentioned before, we don't have a timeframe for spending any of these dollars at the moment, but we do know we have to meet the obligation by the time the building opens. You all are welcome to recommend other uses of the dollars. But it's our recommendation that we just hold on to it until we have more more details.
Mr. Sanders?
Oops. Thought it was also prudent that I just share with you that the ongoing, the conversations are ongoing. In addition to Chris having conversations with the county, I am as well in my capacity with that being a part of the operation side of things. As recent as yesterday, had a conversation with the county. So this is moving. Just want to allay any fears that we're we're sitting and not necessarily reaching any progress or making any progress. We're actually talking about this actively right now.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, did you have something else?
Sorry, I'll lower my head. Sorry.
Ms. Hamel, do you have another slide?
There is one last slide, much of which we've already spoken about. But again, how do we respond to this challenge? You know, we've, the easiest route, easiest in quotes, how do we get that money? Is real estate taxes. We talked about last year that there's the potential to need as much as ten cents, beginning with next year's budget to cover the additional debt service. In addition, with last year's budget, we know that the schools had a four and a half million dollar increase on their operational side that they were able to fund with one-time federal funds through the CARES Act that we will need to make up on the operation side that has the potential to equate to an additional five cents. And and so as we look at this CIP and as we look at moving this this project forward, council and the school board will need to build some community support for these investments. There have also been conversations about the potential of a sales tax, dedicated sales tax increase, which I know are is another thing that's being explored. Again, CIP funding priorities should be revisited. Are we still meeting that mark? Are we putting our dollars where council wants them to go? Again, we can do this by looking at previously approved projects, and we can look at opportunities to reprogram them. One thing to keep in mind is that while the CIP, our operational budgets and the tax rates are reviewed and adjusted annually, once the school project commences, future councils will be obligated to complete the work and to follow through on on whatever plans we have to finance the CIP. And that's basically all of my formal presentation. I'm happy to answer any kind of questions. You know, we have staff here if you have other questions. One last thing, this is just to highlight. The proposed budget will actually, well, first of all, will meet again on December fourteenth for a public hearing on the CIP. And then the formal proposed budget will be presented to council. I believe it's March seventh. And we will begin a month of work sessions after that with these dates here. The CIP, again, there will be a work session, a council work session on that on March thirty-first. And again, if you follow along any of the materials related to those work sessions or the budget development, you can always find those on the city's budget webpage. I also encourage you, we have a great new tool on our webpage for the general fund where you can actually drill down to line item budgets. For right now, you can compare twenty-one and twenty-two. Once we issue or release the proposed budget, you'll be able to compare twenty-two and twenty-three. And so with that, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
On the slide, let me lower my hand, the property tax proposed raise, does that include, does that take into account what is annually allocated towards our property tax relief relief program? Or, you know, any expansion of that?
So I think that is a, I know that is something that the mayor has spoken about repeatedly, and that would would mean additional dollars would be needed for relief. As tax, as the rate increases, the tax rate increases, there will be increased needs for relief. So what that means is for people who are receiving relief, they will still receive relief, but it will be an additional cost to the city for those programs.
Or might kick people into a new eligibility, perhaps?
Perhaps, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Thanks. I I have one question on the revenue side. So if we were to assume perhaps that the sales tax authorization and then referendum were to go through, and we remove maybe that seventy-five million from this CIP, what would be, or is there a revenue enhancement needed at that point? Or is this affordable without the schools?
So the the school project, if it moves forward, will forever and always be part of the CIP. If the sales tax referendum were to pass and we are able to get that, that is a game changer. And to your point, we would then have a dedicated source of dollars that is estimated to be about, if if it were to pass, is about twelve million dollars is our estimate. So we could pay for this entire project in a very short period of time with that revenue. And it would not have an impact on our, you know, debt capacity and on down the line.
Ms. Robb?
On, along that note, how does that, when do we find out about the sales tax and when could it be implemented? I know the project was asked to move to from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-four, and I just wanted to make sure we'd have enough time to make those changes.
So I believe, and Ms. Robertson can correct me, but I believe what has to happen is that this would have to go through the General Assembly and receive General Assembly approval, which would happen January, February-ish. And then it would have to go on a local referendum, which I would, I believe would be November of twenty-two.
I see one point two million dollars in new funding for a fire station in fiscal year twenty-three. Can you tell me that story?
So I'm going to defer to either Mr. Sanders or Chief Smith on that. Or perhaps Ms. Ritter Bolt.
Dr. Smith?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for the hard work that Christie and the team has been doing. I'll speak to the 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 question regarding the new fire station. That project has been on the way. In terms of the framework has been underway for some time now, and we haven't been fully been able to come out of the ground due to a number of different challenges. Obviously, COVID was one of them. But ultimately, what you're seeing there is a change in the cost for construction based on the appreciation of prices and the construction material prices, in addition to the identified need for water main to support that that structure. So that's what that difference is. It's not for the complete fire station, but it's a supplement, the difference between what already had been allocated for the station. So subsequently, we do need the support for that initiative in terms of addressing the rising construction costs and also the water main that had been identified as a need to get the fire station out of the ground.
And that is time sensitive, I take it.
Yeah, actually, it's very time sensitive. When we talk about the health and safety of our firefighters, it's a sixty-year-old plus fire station. And I'm very concerned about the condition of that station, which our men and women work in every day and sometimes in two and three days in a row consistently. So I think it is a priority for this, for us to have that support. And I really appreciate David Brown's team. He's not here anymore. Crystal was online here and Scott Hendricks, others who have came before, who was was here, who were here before I got here, that started this project before I got here. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg?
All right. So I have a few questions about sidewalks. So I hope you guys will entertain me here. I'm looking at our our document with the descriptions of of each line item and and balances from this time in twenty thousand nine, so November twenty-six, two thousand nine, nineteen, nineteen. The balance was six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. We were adding an extra hundred thousand dollars. You told me this week that our balance is now seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So that tells me that we haven't spent any money on sidewalks, even though we have all this money in the last few years. What are the status of those funds and what's holding up any potential projects?
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome. That I don't have all the timing in front of me right now, but we have, was it seven hundred something in that account? That was, that's all committed to a revenue share grant with, at the time, it was a fifty-fifty split with VDOT that has decreased some. So but they're matching all of our seven hundred fifty or or that amount with with their funds. So and that is tied up for at least two more years, if not three more years.
Great. So that's already committed to a project.
To, yeah, we we submitted for that, we submitted a list of our top multimodal projects. So especially since they've adjusted that fund, we're going to sort of start from that top priority go as far as we can with that money.
Perfect. Thanks. Yeah. So to me, it seems that we can't say, well, there's lots of money in the pot with nothing, you know, just sitting around with nothing to do. And so we can get away with not funding it, right? Like, if we put more money into the pot, we could then potentially use that for even more projects?
That's correct.
Great, thanks. All right. So then I guess I'll move on to separate from the new sidewalks line item, Shribbling Avenue. So we reviewed it last month. Our recommendation was contingent on building those sidewalks. It sounded from your email, Ms. Hamel, that if we create this funding agreement like we specified, that won't count against our debt capacity. This project will bring in seven hundred thousand dollars a year in new revenue that wouldn't exist otherwise, which would pay for the project within six or seven years. And then we would have seven hundred thousand dollars a year to spend as we wish, kind of in perpetuity and growing, obviously, as assessments do. So my question then is, if the project pays for itself, doesn't affect our debt capacity and is, again, positive sum in ways that can then fund other things beyond just those, that sidewalk project, why are we not including it in the CIP?
Yeah, so I think that's really more of a policy or a priority question, whether the commission wants to make that recommendation to council or for council to discuss. All the things you just said are correct. I think we have discovered that there are ways to structure that deal and so that it doesn't count against our debt capacity. Keeping in mind, it is a tax revenue, and there's some assumption with the general fund, you know, that piece, that pie that we talk about. There is some assumption about new growth and new development. Any tax revenues that come in, again, pay for everything. So as we start talking about earmarking particular dollars from particular developments, that that is, you know, doing just that. It's earmarking for that. And so, you know, when we have a list of a hundred and twenty-some million dollars of unfunded projects, as we talk about a future with limited capacity to do new things, I think opportunities such as Shribbling Avenue present an opportunity for the commission or for council to look at their priorities and see if it fits.
Speaking of priorities, can we talk about the strategic investment area? I know there's a, actually, I don't know, but I'm guessing there's some money still in that pot. And there's an ask for more money over time. What is, what what does that money get us?
The money, the money goes to implement projects in SIA. And just just for your information, there are several projects right now going on in the SIA. Even though they are fully funded by other funding sources, you know, you need my arise from any one of those projects, you know, that will require application of the SIA implementation to address any one of those projects. As you may know, the construction of Belmont Bridge is underway. That is in the SIA. There is almost a hundred percent design completion for Elliot Streetscape project. And of course, you have a massive redevelopment initiative going on in the SIA, CRHA, Friendship Co. At any given point in time, you need my arise, you know, to use any part of that money for some kind of capital project related to either streets, sidewalk, or any capital need. So that money, inasmuch as it looks like it's a reserve, you know, still has the potential to be used for any one of those projects in terms of overage.
Thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg?
Have we ever expended money out of that fund?
Yeah, we have, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked for Barlock Branch Pedestrian Bridge at this point, you know, and that actually our redevelopment manager, Parks and Rec, Public Works, we are finalizing the the logistics related to that project. And we are looking at starting construction probably sometime next next year.
Thanks.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
All right, here's a quick one. So Key Rec Roof Replacement. I remember last time we talked about the the PV, the solar fund. There was money accruing in there, waiting for roofs to get replaced so that we could, you know, use that and put it on a new roof instead of one that's going to be torn down. Is PV going to be incorporated to that project? Have we had other solar? Um, is PV gonna be incorporated to that project? Have we had other solar projects going on? Um, and I know there's members of the community who say, why expend any money at all for solar when you can just sign a PPA with a private company? They'll go in and, and put the solar on and then you just pay them like you pay Dominion and you still save money. Have we done that or explored that at all?
Um, Ms. Ritter-Bolt, can you help with that?
Yes, thanks for the question. Um, in fact, we are looking at the PPA model. That's something that's become, um, much more, um, I think, practical and appropriate for local governments to be looking at. And it's possible that in, um, some cases, the monies could be used to deal with some of the roof replacements that currently have no funding. So not to say we're kind of saving it, but as soon as we can crack the PPA nut, I think we'll know how we can best use those monies to deal with roof-related costs.
Great. Thanks.
I understand the county is working to extract as much money out of the, the recent news in, in Washington as possible. Um, how does that change our story? Do we need to readjust to get more money from DC? Uh, are some of these things magically paid for from DC?
Yeah, great question. So, um, a lot of the, um, legislation or rules or guidelines, um, are still in the works. And it's, um, not as especially clear right now in terms of what qualifies or what we can use those for. Um, Chris Cullen, the finance director is following that very closely. Um, and, you know, we will be looking for ways to, um, use those dollars depending on what we get. We also have, um, the art money that the city has been allocated. We've gotten the first tranche of that and the second tranche, um, hopefully still to be on the way. Much of that, um, has not been used yet, so that will become, um, part of a conversation. But I'm, I'm not sure that it will be in a timeframe that would affect the CIP necessarily.
I'd like to open it up. Any, uh, more questions?
Um, I guess I have a question and I think I know the answer. But, uh, for the CRHA project, I'm looking at, it's three million per year up until twenty twenty-seven, I think, if I can find it. And I'm assuming that's because, is it because we know the development timeline of CRHA? And they don't need any money after that point, or is it because we don't have any capacity to give them money? How does that? Why does it go down to zero, I guess?
Uh, well, I think, uh, uh, Chrissy can help me with this. Uh, I think, uh, it's based on their funding needs, you know, for the next, uh, five years. And, uh, that decision was, was made, uh, by the city council. And then, uh, based on the information provided by CRHA, you know, so every year right now, uh, in terms of leverage funding, which is coming from the city, you know, as they apply for, uh, Lytech every year, they know that that gap or leverage funding that is required right there, uh, for them. You know, and, uh, that is projected out for the next five years, what they will be needing in terms of, uh, the massive redevelopment initiative that is going on, uh, by, um, CRHA. The subsequent, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but subsequent after that, you know, maybe they'll, they might come back, uh, to the city, you know, as we look, uh, uh, into the future. Because, uh, the CIP is every projected for five years. You know, uh, then there might be a reconsideration for, uh, future funding beyond, uh, um, the next five years.
Yeah, and I would just say, keep in mind that twenty-seven is, um, completely subject to change. Uh, because that is a year with no bonds. And so the CRHA projects do qualify for bonds. Um, and so that's why they're shown under the bondable. But it doesn't mean, it doesn't preclude us from funding that with cash. Um, but for sake of example, with the dollars that would be, that are currently shown as available in twenty-seven, um, that was not shown, um, for CRHA, but rather some of the other things.
Mr. Mitchell? You're on mute, I'm sorry.
Did I raise my hand? Because I thought I lowered it.
You did, yes.
Um, um. I'll, I'll wait until we start wrapping up. Um, I, I would, would love to hear, Mr. Chair, if, um, UVA has any input. They've been pretty quiet.
You've been reading my mind. Mr. Palmer, can you enlighten us?
Uh, it sounds like a lot of tough decisions. I don't really have, you know, from UVA's perspective, much, much to add to the conversation. But, thanks for asking.
Thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg?
Thanks. Uh, so I, uh, I'll start with the Market Street Garage and I'd also like to talk about, uh, affordable housing in trees separately. Um, but I'll let Mr. Bob go after the garage thing. Um, so, uh, six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in structural repairs to Market Street Garage. Uh, I'm glad to see that we're gonna keep it standing. Um, I would like to better understand why, uh, the Parking Enterprise Fund, uh, which is bringing in revenue, uh, from garage operations, um, is not able to pay for this. Um, or at the very least, isn't able to pay us back for this. Um, so prior to COVID, uh, the Parking Enterprise Fund, even after the transfer to the General Fund, uh, was, was booking in the high six figures, low seven figures, uh, net, net gains, uh, you know, profits essentially every year. Um, and in, in fact, I think it accrued something like nearly three million dollars, uh, sitting in its balance. Uh, so I understand that it's been operating at a loss, uh, since COVID started, since nobody's using the garages. Um, we'll, we'll put that aside with, uh, uh, Court's Raymond and why we couldn't spend tons of money on that. Um, but, uh, one assumes that eventually the garages will go back to something approaching, uh, normal capacity. Um, at which point there will be lots of money, right? Um, and so if the point of Parking Enterprise Fund, uh, was to pay for its own operations, um, doesn't that include, uh, improving or, or keeping, maintaining its, its own capital infrastructure? Um, at, at the very least, uh, you know, if we're gonna be taking out, uh, five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in bonds to keep up the Market Street Garage, shouldn't they at least be making a transfer to the Debt Service Fund? Um, you know, commensurate with that amount in order to pay for those bonds, uh, even if they can't afford it all at once in our COVID constraint time?
So I, I'll start and then Mr. Engel can fill in where I get it wrong or what I'm missing. Um, so first of all, the Parking Enterprise Fund, um, was set up to operate, um, in a very much of the way that you're describing, to be an enterprise fund that's self-supporting, um, that all of those revenues would come in, uh, it would maintain all of its infrastructure. Um, eventually be able to, if we need to issue debt, could support its own debt, um, you know, outside the general fund. That was the plan. Um, what has happened is that in doing that, you also have to assume all the costs of that infrastructure. Depreciation, um, and lots of other things that the parking revenues with, um, the whole, that moving the parking revenue from the general fund to the parking fund don't cover. So what has happened is the parking fund has operated as sort of a quasi, um, enterprise fund for the last few years. And you are correct, pre-COVID, um, there was a fund balance in that fund. But as, um, COVID has happened and as the transfers back to the general fund have continued to happen, um, I believe the estimate right now, um, of the fund balance in the parking fund will end, uh, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with just over six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, so it, one, that's not enough to cover the expected costs of Market Street. Um, and number two, uh, we are expecting a, a very similar bill coming down the pike for Water Street, um, in a very short period of time, in which case we would expect the parking fund to cover that. So that is why we did not look to the parking fund for the Market Street repairs.
Yeah, nothing to add. You covered it well, Chrissy. Ideally, we would use the fund for this purpose, but, uh, we don't have, um, enough funds there, given the situation, to, to do so.
And, and so if I'm, I'm looking at the current year's adopted budget where it, it was six sixty projected for the end of the year, so pretty close, uh, to actual six forty. Um, and it still said that in this current fiscal year, uh, that the Parking Enterprise Fund, after the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer, would book a seven, or six hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar profit. Um, and so that alone would more than pay for this garage and then presumably the following years could pay for, uh, the Water Street garages. Um, so I guess question A is, are we running significantly behind that budget? Because obviously work from home has continued. Um, B, uh, even if we can't do it this fiscal year, um, if we're assuming that at some point we get back to normal, um, you know, if any given year's, uh, revenue or, or net gain can pay for any one of these expenditures that only have been made, you know, once every five years, once a decade, um, you know, why, why can't it be paying us or the CIP fund, uh, back after the fact? Um, and question C is, uh, what is the, the outlook for the Parking Enterprise Fund, uh, once the Water Street Garage lease resets in twenty twenty-four? Is that the problem here?
So that was a lot. Um, uh, the, um, so I'll take a stab at some of your first questions. Um, keep in mind right now, the parking fund, uh, the dollars in the parking fund, whether it's money to the general fund or the CIP, it's all the same dollars. Because the parking dollars are coming back to the, the net parking revenues are coming back to the general fund, um, or they're paying expenses related to parking. Um, and then, um, I'm trying to think, what was your next question?
Uh, is the, does the current fiscal year's outlook seemingly worse than budgeted?
Okay, so that one I'm gonna defer to Chris, cause I'm, I'm not familiar with that, not close enough to that.
Yeah, it was pretty close to, um, what we expected. I think it ended up a little bit under, but I think the net, uh, balance is six hundred and forty-ish at the end of twenty-one. Um, so that is, is not enough to cover the, the expected expense on Market Street. And as alluded to earlier, we, we will likely have a similar amount, uh, for Water Street, actually a little bit more, given its size. Um, and we have no source for that, so the fund, obviously, to the extent that we can accrue some money in that, as we come out of COVID and revenues improve, um, will be allocated, uh, for that. Um, as to your question about Water Street, when the ground lease resets, that's an unknown. Um, it will likely go up. We don't know how much it will go up. Um, that will be something that, uh, we have to deal with in conjunction with, uh, rates, as well as, um, other city resources to potentially cover that, um, to, to maintain that.
My question about the budget was for this current fiscal year, FY twenty-two.
Oh, FY twenty-two, uh, we're, we're doing okay so far. Um, things are improving every year, uh, I mean, every month, not every year. Um, and we're, Market Street is, is closer to normal. It's not quite there. Um, Water Street is still, still a bit off, although, um, every month there, there's new monthlies that are added back. And, and transient is picking up, although, um, kind of comes and goes with, with the seasons, if you will. Uh, but, but we're doing okay so far in twenty-two.
And so if we're on budget to get, if we're on budget, we're gonna have six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in net gain. After the transfer, why isn't there money to pay for the repairs?
Well, I, I would say it's a planning piece, right? So, um, we have to plan for what we know we have to pay. Right now, we know we do not have the dollars to cover that. Should the budget come in in twenty-two and council decide they want to redirect some of that money from the parking fund to pay for those, they certainly could with a separate action. But in terms of planning a CIP, I think we have to plan for what we know right now, which is that the parking fund does not have enough money to cover those.
Mr. Butler?
Um, thanks. I'm, uh, looking at the, um, Home Energy Conservation Grant Program and it has zero dollars all throughout. So is that an unfunded CIP item? Or why is it, it's on the, the funded list?
Yeah, that was, um, a change, I believe, that happened in twenty-one. Um, and I believe at the time, and Alex, I'm not sure if you have more information, we can get you some more information. But, um, I believe there was some concern, um, about the ability to, um, spend those dollars. Uh, and so they were combined and they actually, that's how the CAF got to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It was funded at eight hundred thousand with a hundred and twenty-five each year going to energy conservation. And they were just combined, making the energy conservation piece, um, another qualification that is eligible, uh, for the CAF application.
That's, that's good to hear. Um, I guess on that note, I did wanna bring up, I know there's not a solution right now, but with the climate action plan that we're doing and our comp plan goals, there isn't a lot of allocation to achieving any of those goals that we wanna achieve. Um, in future projected years, so that's something that hopefully we can look at later on.
Uh, two questions. Um, the, uh, garage maintenance, is it possible to push that, push that back until we have money?
Um, I'm not sure, Mr. Engel or Ms. Ritter-Bolt.
Um, it's not recommended, um, based upon the analysis that was just done. This type of maintenance needs to occur every five to seven years. And it's been, correct me if I'm wrong, Crystal, but probably at least six years since the last round, uh, was done. But, um, it should probably be done.
Yeah, um, every five years, there's essentially a facility condition assessment that gets done. And the items are presented in, um, three categories with the priority one items being considered deficient items that have immediate impact to the functionality of the building system and need to be addressed within one or two years. And so that's really the driver. This request is for the priority one components. And they include things like structural, waterproofing, um, yeah. And, and while I have just the screen for half a second, you know, Chrissy and I have talked a few times that the, um, the construction industry is really seeing some really crazy escalations. And so, um, we are finding ourselves repeatedly putting projects out to bid and having the bids come back higher than our estimated cost. So even what's in our current proposal, proposed plan, we don't have, I would say, a warm fuzzy feeling that we're gonna be able to do those projects. That's just a reality that everybody's hitting, not just Charlottesville.
Thank you. Uh, second question. Um, many years ago, uh, we were planning to, uh, fully fund the Tonsler Park, uh, project, uh, but pulled it because, um, hous- housing, uh, projects took greater priority. Uh, but there was great, uh, desire at that time to find a way to, to bring it back. Uh, is there a way to put Tonsler back into the plan in the, in the five-year scope?
Yeah, so, of course, um, you know, there's a way, there's another three and a half million dollars that currently resides on the unfunded list for Tonsler. Um, you know, I think that gets back to, uh, y- y- you know, priorities. And, um, you know, as we've, if we've shaped this, you know, one of the things is, and add one place is a reduction someplace else. And so, you know, what would be the trade-off, um, if we wanted to add the three, you know, three point five is the number that we need? What would be the trade-off that we could, you know, push out or push off and do Tonsler instead?
Thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg?
All right, here's a quick and easy one. Uh, trees, tree planting. Um, there's twenty-five thousand dollars in, uh, tree planting that's unfunded. Um, I would, uh, like to see that happen, um, but of course, as you said, everything is a trade-off. Um, so I'm looking at the skate park item, um, and I've, I've seen the, uh, the, like, you know, fundraisers they've been doing. Um, and I'm looking at that twenty-five thousand dollar line item and I'm thinking, if they can raise like a hundred thousand dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars for the skate park, it should definitely be possible to raise twenty-five thousand dollars in private land to reap for trees. Um, then I read an old urban foresters report, like State of the Forest, and they talk about this funds for the forest. And they talk about this funds for the forest, like campaign or, you know, fund, I guess, where they accept donations for treats. And so that seems like an item and maybe there are other items where we could just go out to the community and say, hey, if you'd like to kick in a few bucks for this, like, please do so. So my question is, can I write a check somewhere and give some money for trees?
Sure. In fact, there is an account that, and Mr. Garber can speak to this too, but there is an existing account in the general fund that has existed for years that is just for that. People can write a check to make contributions for trees.
Great. How do I do it? There's nothing on the website.
Charlottesville area tree stewards will also take your check, Roy.
I checked that, that's true.
And so do we see their activities as being kind of complimentary or substituting in a way where, you know, if, if they do twenty five thousand more and stuff, we have twenty five thousand less than need for tree planting?
The cats in tree steward, I mean, cats and the tree commission combine efforts to plant additional trees. So we, we lean and depend, the city leans and depends upon cats to help us try to make up the deficit in new trees.
Vic is, Vic is having difficulty with his connection, but Vic will probably reach out to you and say, tell you where to send your check. We'd be happy at Parks and Rec to receive your check.
Yeah, and just some clarification on trees as well. So that twenty five thousand dollars is the portion that is not funded, but there is actually money in the CIP for planting trees. It's at seventy five thousand dollars a year. And in addition, I just want to point out that this draft does also add money to address the, the ash tree situation as well.
But I'd like to clarify that because if a hundred and five thousand was requested
That's correct.
For the Emerald Dash four tree removal, we asked for fifty thousand last year, got nothing. So it's been cut, to my mind, you keep saying adding, but to me, it means it's been cut from a hundred and five thousand requests to fifty thousand. And same with the tree planting, been cut from a hundred thousand dollar request, which just kept us level with the needed number of trees to replace the, those that we lose. We've lost four hundred and sixty acres of trees since two thousand and four. We are fast not becoming a tree city. So, and, and it, that's not just aesthetics. We all know now what the issues are with health and, and what it means about communities that do not have enough trees and utility costs. So it's a huge impact, but I feel silly talking about fifty thousand and twenty five thousand. And when, you know, the city is, is buying something in a few years, it's gonna eliminate our bonding, bond, our, our ability to issue bonds. That kind of tells me we can't afford it. But I get, obviously, there are smarter people in economics than I am, that, that makes sense to somebody.
I would suggest to you, Mr. Linder, that your championship, championship of the canopy is important. And if I look back in the conference of plan, that you helped us develop and play and, and pass. The investment i- in protecting ash tree, the issue is, is worth it. And we should find something we can delete to add the supportive, the protecting the canopy.
It, it's a, it's a silly, short-sighted plan to think that by cutting the money to get rid of the ash trees that are being diseased and that you're saving in the long run. Yours, your, it's costing you multiple times what you would spend now to take them down. Because they're gonna come down in the middle of the storm. They're, they're gonna be an emergency situation, a, they're brittle from the, the results of Emerald Dash fours. They're unpredictable when they come down. And you're gonna end up, the city's gonna end up spending much more.
I, I would suggest, Mr. Linder, that it's, it's exactly because these, these small items like trees or a couple hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks are so impactful for so little money, that it's important to talk about them and, and to look at what we can shift around. You know, when, when we have four point three million dollars allocated to put up no parking on first floor court sign parking or court parking only signs, like, that is a, that is a lot of trees and sidewalks that you are soaking up for something with, with much less benefit to the community. And our job here is to be getting the best thing for our buck for every dollar that we're spending here. So yeah, the school reconfiguration crowds out a lot, but there's, I think, a lot to be done in prioritizing on, on the rest of this. So on trees, I would just point out, UVA is out here selling you a memorial tree for eighteen hundred bucks. And I know there are a lot more than fourteen people dying in the city every year. And I bet we could, we could get that twenty five thousand dollars and much more for trees if we just put up a webpage and, and made it a thing that people could go out and, and say, hey, this is my tree. But that's all I have to say about trees for now. I, I do have affordable housing, I could, I could go on a thing, but I'd like to offer the floor if anyone else has something before I go on that.
Anyone hungry?
I'm happy to hear more about affordable housing because I care deeply about that.
I feel the same way. Please take us there.
So in our affordable housing plan, we, we have certain observations from our consultants and certain recommendations. And what they observed is that we have done a fairly poor job of deciding the amounts and allocations of our Lytech gap funding. And what they've recommended is that we put essentially the bulk of the money into the CAF, into this free-form account that can be allocated out of, and then form a committee that weighs different allocations or applications for allocations against each other. And, and in so doing, you know, again, get the best thing for our buck spent on affordable housing. And so what I, what I see in this capital improvement program is continuation of the same relatively small dollar amount we're putting into the cap. And, and very large dollar amounts for specific projects that we have made, in some cases specific and in some cases vague commitments to in the past. And in particular, you know, I see Friendship Court is on the, on the funded list to the tune of several million dollars per year. And four and a half million dollars for phase four. And then MACA and the Senior Housing and Park Tree Christian Church are, are on the unfunded list. And, and to me, maybe there are reasons for this that are beyond this, but to me, it seems that Friendship Court got there first. And those other ones are kind of Johnny come lately asks. And we said, well, this was already on the CIP, like, let's keep this here. And now I, I recognize that we made a commitment for Friendship Court redevelopment, but that phases one through three. And then phase four has essentially not been specified yet pretty much at all, except that it will probably be taller, some mix of commercial and residential. And it will not be, like, all of the current residents will already have been rehoused in phases one through three. And, you know, I, I have to wonder, particularly given the unit costs that we're seeing out of earlier Friendship Court phases, which of these, how, how we're prioritizing between them? And whether it's prudent to, and I mean, assuming that we are going to be forming the, the committee to decide between these things as we have adopted in our plan, as our plan. Should we in these out-years be putting this money into a central pot and deciding those allocations later according to some, you know, real criteria and objective standards, rather than who got there first?
Let's take that one.
Yeah, okay. That's a lot, you know, I'm not sure, I can't. I'm looking at two questions of what you said. One, it's probably the amount of money appropriated for Friendship Court, you know, in terms of dollar per unit may be higher than usual, you know. I think Friendship Court project is a very good project, is a phased project that will yield in excess of four hundred units, you know, once it's built out. And one of the reasons the, the appropriation from all, funding from the city, it's high in terms of investment to a unit, to a unit is because if you recall, Friendship Court, you know, has a one-way in, one-way out. And the design for that project breaks the site, you know, up. And then it provides integration of the design and construction with the rest of the city grid. Instead of one way in, one way out, it will look like a regular neighborhood where, like streetscape, sidewalks, trees and what have you. It's a really brand-new infrastructure, if you will. Whether it's a stormwater drainage system, it has to be constructed for the four phases. The sidewalks, the streets, the trees and everything else that relates to infrastructure. So that's why there is a considerable expense in terms of that project. And secondly, they came to the city council, you know, with that need, not just the, the housing component. But the fact that they're gonna need assistance from the city in terms of addressing the infrastructure that will support the project. And third, the infrastructure, you know, the agreement between PHA and the city is that the infrastructure will be designed to comply with the streets that walk. You know, and it's going to be built to city standard. And once it's completed, it will be turned over to public works for maintenance. You know, so that's why the expense looks like it's unusual. And the, the other aspect of the phase four, of which we don't know whether it's going to happen or not. The money you are looking at tied to phase four, it's actually a placeholder, you know. The decision in terms of actual funding would be made when we get to that point, but that money is a placeholder.
So, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, in a sense, all of our out-year CIP items are placeholders, right? And so, I mean, by the same logic, our phase two funding is a, is a placeholder. But I think we're very likely to give them two and a half million for phase two. And, and so, you know, if you are doing a competitive allocation, for example, and you have this committee that reviews requests, I, I think there's a big difference between saying, there's money in this pot. We're going to decide who's gonna get it, including potentially phase four. And in, in saying, well, we have the money in our pot and maybe we will grab this extra pot of money that's already allocated, but only as a placeholder for one thing, right? And I, I don't mean to pick on Friendship Court specifically here. You know, I, I, I'm not trying to say that the, the plan is bad, certainly. And I do think that we, we redevelopment of Friendship Court is a worthy goal. And I think the plan has worthy non-housing elements in it. But, you know, I, I, I have to wonder, you know, where, what are the asks? Where are we coming up with the exact numbers of the asks? And, you know, it seems to me that, you know, even for those other things on the unfunded list, what we see is a request that gets to be one line on the unfunded list. But is there, is there a pro forma? Is there a description of, of needs and things that this money will be spent on? Is there a justification for why it's needed to attain Lytech funds? Because I, I look at, for example, Friendship Court Phase One, and I see that, you know, they, they maxed out the points that they could get for external subsidy. And then they got an extra nine hundred thousand dollars of external subsidy from us. And, and Lytech, if you didn't have that external subsidy, would just give you more money. So, you know, in, in making sure that we're getting the most of our federal funds and making the projects happen, you know, there's a potential that we could have made the project happen and spent less money. And, and obviously, we all want to do that because then we could fund an entire extra year of vouchers or something. And it just doesn't seem like there's a cohesive logic behind how we're making these funding decisions. Or, or maybe there is and it's all behind the scenes, behind all these numbers.
So I don't know. So what are you recommending that the project be suspended? I'm trying to get to what you are requesting.
I, I think, I see Mr. Sanders' hand raised. I'm expecting some wisdom here.
Set me up for wisdom. Okay, so Commissioner Stolzenberg, I appreciate the comment that you're making. I think what I'll, what I'll say to you is, you're, you're acknowledging the challenges that we have, that we, we do have some with how we have done some things in the past. And that is the reason why we are doing the analysis that we're doing. In reading the affordable housing plan, which I have spent a great deal of time with since arriving here in July, there's a lot of work to be done. And the points that you're making this evening are really, really specific and on point with that analysis work that needs to continue to get done. I don't think we want to get into picking a winner or loser situation after having already awarded these funds to Friendship Court. So I, I understand what you're saying in that we need to have a process. And that is very much what I focus on in everything that I'm doing these days. The council is on the sixth, having a beginning discussion about governing the CAF funds. And as you identify, that the plan does suggest that we put more money or just drop all the money into that fund. That is exactly where that conversation needs to begin and focus on what the outcomes can be once we start to do things a little bit differently. HRNA is gonna really, really give us an eye-opening report. Will be a little hard for us to digest, but you know, the truth hurts sometimes. And you just take that information and move it forward. And, and while I also want to just say, Commissioner Mitchell, that you were concerned about spending the nine hundred and twenty five thousand on staff in any way, there is a need for additional staff to be able to get this work done to the degree that it needs to get done and to be able to check the boxes that you're pointing out with your comments. So I, I think all of it is important for us to discuss and we have to continue to evaluate this. But we are on track for trying to get there. And it is gonna take a little time and a little more resources to be able to achieve it.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And again, I don't mean to be picking on any specific project. I'm using phase one as an example because that's what we have the numbers for, for phase one of Friendship Court and for South First Street in terms of their Lytech application. Because other than that, you know, there really isn't much documentation or anything. But obviously, all that funding has already been awarded, that's water under the bridge. So I guess my big question is, you know, does this layout of the CIP, you know, put us in a good position for this future where we have a CAF committee and are, and have a better system for allocating these funds? Does it make sense to leave it as it is now? Or, I mean, perhaps it, it makes sense to leave it as it is now, with the understanding that once this committee is formed and we create that better process, that next year CIP might not look at all like this one does. That these placeholders will, will then later, you know, be moved around because of that process.
So I just want to make one point as you think about that. Keep in mind, the CAFs, the vouchers, Friendship Court are all cash-funded projects. So unlike the bond-funded projects where we can easily move things within those five years and adjust our timetable for selling bonds, you don't have that flexibility on the cash side. So in terms of where our plan is right now, as we've talked about, your cash balance is your cash balance. So if you talk about shifting that around, you know, you're again still talking about trade-offs. Because even as you talk about phase four for Friendship Court, that is a cash-funded project, that cash would not be available. That is a cash-funded project. That cash would not be available until twenty-six, twenty-seven. So just keep that in mind as you talk about these different options. Um, it still is very much a conversation about trade-offs.
Mayor Walker, please help us.
Thank you. Let me share. Um, Friendship Court is one of those, um, just to. Just, you know, comment on Roy's concerns. I'm not even sure how we ended up, and I was on council at the point that we ended up in, um, with those, um. You know, the discussions, the amount, the parks and rec plan, there's also a TIF with this property where there will be tax. You know, um, taxes that they can use to fund, um, some of the developments. I asked the city for the amount of money that we were invested in Friendship Court, that there should be an ownership stake on the property. To ensure that we didn't end up in the situation that we ended up a few years ago. And the way that they're separating out the phases, I thought, since there wasn't a plan for phase four, and it could potentially be all market rate. Um, which every time I posed that question, um, I did not get a clear. Board, that, um, for the city to fund, um, phases one through three, that we should definitely have, um, used. For sec, um, phase four to be transferred in ownership to the city to ensure that the city, um, had a say in what happened in that plan. And, um, those things didn't happen for a variety of reasons. But, um, I, I just wanted to make those points to put on the radar that those things still should be monitored. And the AMI, um, level, the city and the parks and rec play, um, planning that's happening now. There's, um, a plan to not have the level of affordability in this area that I think we could have. Um, targeted, especially since everyone is familiar with what surrounds, um, Friendship Court. But they were, um, pretty consistent on that, like, deconcentration of poverty model, which I didn't understand. The, what, based on where they sit and what's all around them. It's pretty de-concentrated. Um, and so, there's also a home, homeownership opportunities that are gonna come, um, up in there. So I was a thorn in, you know, their behinds on this project, and I still think that there's a lot of unanswered. Um, questions, and the city could have leveraged this position, uh, you know, based on the amount of money that is invested better than it did.
And I just like to emphasize, it's, it's still pretty early days for that, right? Like, we, we put in a little under six million out of a twenty-two-ish million total commitment, um, over all the year CIP. Um, so, um, there's, there's much more managing of this project left to be done, and I, I'd like to see us get the most out of it. A- and every other project, right? This, this hundred million dollar commitment we're making. Um, but I, pardon to hear, uh, Mr. Sanders, um, talk about the upcoming report and plans.
Mayor Walker's concept of, uh, an ownership stake, my, my, my understanding of the reason we couldn't, uh, respond to the funds for Friendship Court was because. The city did not have an ownership stake. Would that change the formula?
Yeah, so the tax law gets pretty complicated with, um, that, but ownership, to your point, um, was a factor. Um, and, you know, if things were to change, we could certainly reevaluate, but as it stands right now, it was not eligible for bonds.
Thank you. Any additional questions or conversation on this topic before we close? I feel like we're starting to, to wrap up. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think there would be, um, great value if, um, the commissioners could get staff a little input on, um. The trade-offs that, that they might be interested in. In the day. We should not, in my humble opinion, we should not raise the amount of money we want to spend. But there is an opportunity to do some trade-offs. So I think there would be value in us giving staff. Input on trade-offs, so that we're not having this debate, um, in December when we actually have to vote. So. Mr. Chad, you may wanna pull the commission on trade-offs.
That's a wonderful idea. Um, Mr. Ruby, hop up.
Um, before, I just had a quick question on just a couple of small things.
Please.
And it's, I think it's just my understanding of the CIP is my first, first one. Um. I'm looking at the downtown mall infrastructure repairs. It's, uh, seventy-eight thousand dollars, um, every year. And another one I saw is the sidewalk repair. Why is that not part of, if it's a recurring forever expense? Why is that part of the CIP?
Um, so, good question. They both, so the sidewalk, I'm sorry, the downtown mall infrastructure. Um, that seventy-eight thousand dollars, that was put into the CIP and, um, a couple of years ago. That is actually funded fully by the cafe fees that are paid for the cafes on the mall. So if you look at the top, you also see an offsetting revenue for that, um, and that is for more general maintenance. Um, and then, just generally speaking, um, the things that are in the CIP are generally. Um, not recurring in nature, but anything that we fund with cash. Can go in the CIP, and that does that, um, a lot of times it's put in there to accumulate the funds for something that might be a bigger expense or an ongoing expense. Um, because the appropriation carries forward as opposed to something in the general fund where the appropriation. Um, at the end of every year is over with unless council re-appropriates it. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
I think it does. I think it's, but like the, if we do that and put stuff in the CIP, even if it's non-bondable, we're diminishing the three percent. The actual three percent of the budget going into the CIP for other projects.
Yeah, and as a general rule, we try not to do that. Um. And we can probably, um, I can check with staff and find out, get a little bit more detail for you on that sidewalk repair account. To find out why it is different from sort of the everyday. Um. Sidewalk maintenance or whatever. I'll, I'll get some more info for you on that one.
Thank you.
Moving to the idea of some straw pulls, uh, any thoughts or desires for, uh, what to pull upon?
The parking structure.
Parking structure, uh, dimin- diminishing, uh, funding and pulling existing funding out, uh, to, for reprogramming, I believe. Can I get, uh, thumbs up, uh, for diminishing and reprogramming or thumbs down?
Are you talking about any structural repairs? Cause I don't think we should shortchange those.
I'm talking about the other parking structure, mine item.
Sorry.
Good question. I, I, I see a majority of thumbs up on that one. Uh, other items to pull on? Uh, ash trees jumped to my mind. Uh, full funding for ash trees?
I'm, I'm happy to do that. I think that, um, we probably need to get, um. The tree commissioner and Vic to huddle. And I think if we're going, going to do that, I think it's important to do that. Canopy is important. Um, we probably need to have a chat with, um, Mr. Hindra and Vic. To talk about other things in parks and rec that we wanna do, that we might be able to switch off. But I think, uh, I agree with, uh, Mr. Hindra that. The canopy is important, and we need to protect it, and it begins with the ash tree.
I, I see a, a chat comment in, uh, from Ms. Russell. Can you state that, please?
Uh, we received a letter on November eighteenth from the tree commission, um, requesting a hundred thousand dollars funding request for planting trees. Requesting a hundred and five thousand dollars for combating the Emerald Ash Bore. So, um, supporting Parks and Rec CIP requests.
Yeah, so the tree commission has already made its, um, uh, recommendations known. Um, so I, I'm, Hosea, does that affect what you just said?
Uh, yeah, you can, yeah. What I think, we, we need to make trade-offs. Yes, I think we need to do, do the work to protect the canopy. But if we're going to do that, then we need to like. Concede that something else needs to go away.
I just voted to, to concede the parking garage. Take note of that.
Four point three million.
I think we could do trees and sidewalks and a lot of other things.
I heard the word, word sidewalks, uh, sidewalk fund, uh, re, uh.
The only point is like, um, we add stuff, but we delete stuff. We, this budget has been neutral.
Agreed. Uh, sidewalks, uh, restore funding, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Well, I, I think we should talk about what restoring funding means, right? Like, our pre-COVID budget was three hundred thousand dollars a year for new sidewalks. Um. We're now down to zero for this coming year, and then a hundred thousand in perpetuity, uh, until bonding capacity runs out, and then it's nothing again. Um. I think it makes sense, probably, given the goals, the conference plan we just passed, uh, to return that at least to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, which, again, all of that together over a five-year CIP is a million and a half. Um, and there's four and a half, four, four point three million in here for that garage, um, which. Again, the two contractually obligated options that the county can choose, there's, there's just no chance that it could cost. Anywhere near that amount to implement that. Um, and I. Without hearing some rationale from staff, you know, I'm, I'm willing to allow that some amount should be left in that fund, but. But millions of dollars for, for signage, it just doesn't, um, make sense to me, even, even gate adjustments for validation. Um, and so. The amount that should be removed from that fund, um, should be. I would think nearly all of it, uh, which would pay for all the things we just said, the Hosea's point.
Again, just to be, um, fiscally, fiscally responsible, I think we just need to make sure that if we're adding stuff. We delete stuff, and we do the math for council, so council doesn't have to do it. We come to staff saying, we're gonna, gotta add this, we're gonna delete this, and it, it, it balances, so staff doesn't have to do the work.
Do you have a suggestion for something to delete?
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, um, staff's recommendation, so I'm gonna let you guys. Play with it.
Separate from the balancing the budget thing, um, Tribbling Avenue, which has, which would be paid for by revenue that. Would not affect our bonding capacity, um, seems like, again, a no-brainer.
So, Roy, you said scribbling?
Scribbling, yeah.
Tribbling Avenue with the funding agreement created by the economic.
I thought, I thought though, yeah, I, I, you know, I think it's worthy of a conversation, so I think you're on to something there. Um. If we can do that, make it work. And not go into debt. It makes sense to do it.
Can I get the thumbs up, thumbs down? Uh, scribbling three million dollar sidewalks?
Does that change anything on the budget? Where is that in the proposed?
Yeah, 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 we're, we're off topic, but yeah, but.
It's, yeah, it's in the unfunded, but it would, it would pay for itself.
Would that include a, a new revenue item of drawing on that developer line of credit? Miss Amel, is that how that would balance?
Uh, it, yeah, so there would, uh, in the CIP, there would be a revenue line item. Um, and then there would be the expense for the sidewalk, and we would have to look at the back end, um. You know, in terms of the funding agreement and that kind of thing. But I guess just keep in mind with that, um, you know, it is a revenue, um, and it is a way to get that done. But on the general fund side, um, it is now sort of, um, an earmark of revenue. Um, that's not available for anything else.
And the only other objection I have with that is like, um, is it relates to our backlog of things to do. Is it the next thing Public Works has to work on? Cause maybe they've got other things they need to get to before that, so.
Ms. Russell?
Uh, maybe I missed this, and it's, I'm just kinda now getting where I'm processing it, but when we were talking about the, the bypass fire station. Is that all expected? That one point two million expected to be spent in twenty-three?
Um, again, uh, so I'm not sure what the spend down rate would be. Um, we would be, um, not selling the bonds until we've spent the money or we're pretty, you know, it's w- well underway. But again, we have to have the budget available to sign the construction contract, so that's why it's all shown there.
Yeah, I think the chief's, um, argument for that was pretty, I was ready to, it's like, can't, can't move this. His argument is pretty compelling that we need to do that, so.
I mean, you typically could phase something out. It might end up costing more if you don't sign that contract all at once, but I understand.
Yeah, and the construction costs would just continue to rise, and the need will continue to exist.
I can't, I can't fashion that one. I think I agree with you.
I wanted to go back to, so the scribbling thing, the money would be earmarked in the general fund, but it wouldn't exist if. The project doesn't happen for the sidewalk, so it just, it seems kinda silly not to do it. If it's the only way the money's gonna be there if we, is if we have the project.
So if I recall the way we voted, um, it only happens if council authorizes. The infrastructure. I think that, that was the, the vote that you, you allow, or Liz, uh, Ms. Russell, um. All offered. So scribbling won't happen unless council. Comm- commits the city to pay for the infrastructure, city infrastructure.
That's how you framed your recommendation. So, coun- council would have different ways of, of looking at that, and, and. This is the, you know, there would be income on the front end for the tax revenue. But when we add residential to our community, there are costs that do arise with that. And, uh, not all of those, um, I don't know what all of those things would be, but, um, you know, we. We would have some revenue from, from property taxes, but we would also have new costs that we didn't have before as well.
We'd also theoretically have more income tax and also sales tax with new people living here. That could offset some of that.
Yeah.
So, just from a, a pragmatic standpoint, um, in terms of this work session, and then the public hearing that we have in December. Um, is the idea that you all will come up and form your recommendation? And then that will be part of the presentation on, at the public hearing on the fourteenth, or. What is, wh- what are we envisioning this process to look like in terms of the public hearing?
Well, um, I'll note in the past that, um, the CIP hearing has been an education opportunity. Um, it's, it's an opportunity to, to provide an overview of what CIP is and what is being presented. And that's something that, um, both our new members as well as the, the community, it, it helps give them that context. And then typically, they have, there's the discussion that's very similar to what has evolved in this work session. Usually the, in the work session, it's, it's more high level. Um, and then the commissioners ask quite a few questions, and a lot of research needs to be done in between. Um, we will note that, uh, commissioners provided a number of questions along the way. And, and staff was able to spend quite a bit of time, um, getting answers to those questions. And so, um, that was kind of a step that, uh, hasn't happened until later in this discussion process. And so, it may be that, uh, after the education and public hearing portion. That the discussion by the commission may be a little bit more streamlined. Um, it sounds like, uh, just from what I'm hearing so far is that, uh, there's interest in. Um, noting a recommendation that would include a potential decrease of certain accounts. And potential increase of certain other accounts now. Um, usually, uh, the commission doesn't get into the weeds of what those numbers are. Um, it's just more so the, the priority areas, um, that, that we would like to see more funding. We would like to see funding come away from X, Y, and Z, and we would like to see funding go towards these items in their stead. Um, rather than you all getting into the accounting portions of it. Um, it's, it's more of the, the broader perspective, so that, that might be the direction that the hearing goes in. I don't know if any of the other, well, any of the commissioners have any thoughts based on our past CIP hearing experiences.
So having lived through this like, uh, two times. So having lived through this like, uh, two times in my current life and one time my, my last life, I think it's very important that, uh, commissioners walk staff through the trade-offs that they like to see. And so staff is then prepared to explain the trade-offs. So either you embrace the budget that, that staff has, has prepared, or you don't. But then you understand and have already vetted the trade-offs that will be need to made, need to be made. Uh, so staff can like, be wo- willing to coach us through those. And so we can then vote on what the trade-offs is gonna be, so.
And how that's been documented in the past is, um, that the, the commission's motion uh, ends up being put into a memo format. Um, and then that memo is placed, uh, with the materials that go to council specific to the CIP. So council was there to listen, um, and they're also reminded, uh, with materials that are in their packet.
Well, what's frustrating has been frustrating from over the years, including when I was like, had, had, had to do it, I was got it, manage a suit. Is that we, uh, we did the sausage event. It would be really helpful if we could just like have that debate by email, talking back and forth with, with, um, staff. Uh, so that we understand the consequences of the trade-offs before we get on the dais or the virtual dais to make those decisions. Cause if we've got the, uh, the data, the numbers, we can make our decisions and be ready to make our votes and decisions, uh.
Ideally have votes and language prepared in advance, so we're not up until 1:00 AM.
If you all have specific questions and, and items that you're interested in specific numbers or ranges of numbers, we can provide that factual information. We are not going to encourage a meeting over the internet, um, at least over email. Definitely, uh, the, our virtual, uh, situation continues. But, um, you know, we, we have no problem providing background information on, on items. Uh, we just can't, uh, have you all having discussions through email about where that lands. So that's, that's where we are here. So you all can, can do that here. Um, and you can do that at the hearing.
Yeah, and thank you, Miss, Missy, and La, I was like, here. Just ask the questions now, get them answered, so that we come to the meeting prepared to like, make a decision. It's most like, I've seen us make sausage and drill the dice and let them go. It's hard.
I have another, uh, straw poll idea and, and, uh, hopefully we can wrap up in a little bit. The, uh, restoring funding for Tonsler Park, bringing it back onto the five-year plan, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down?
My, I'd love to do it. My only thought is like, if you want to do that, tell me, tell us what we take out of the budget.
At this point, I, I would suggest the parking. That we've already struppled that we would.
Yeah, I'm, I'm cool. Again, just one guy, but that works for me.
I have to better understand what's in that plan and what that funding would be going towards. Um, you know, I mean, I'd certainly point to other needs within the transportation and access category that that parking garage funding could and they should be going for and even needs to be going for if we're going to be implementing, you know, our comp plan goals. Uh, you know, for example, basic infrastructure is far below our pre-COVID numbers. And new sidewalks, uh, ADA compliance is gonna be zeroed out. But, but I, I don't, I don't have a good sense of what's, what that is yet, so I could, I'll do more research.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Kind of same question as, as looking at splitting up. Um, I wouldn't we, um, allocate all of the slate roof replacement fiscal year 24? And what's the 23, is that design, is that? I mean, uh, 42 in year 23.
Crystal, can you address that?
Sure, I don't have the, um, the details in front of me, but typically roof, big roof projects like that have design in one year and then construction in the following year, because we follow a design, bid, build model.
Sure, I guess it maybe doesn't, I'm then not clearly understanding why we've got so much put in the, the fire station and I understand it increased and that's just a big, a big number with not a lot of detail behind it. So granted, I'm new, I, this is the first I'm seeing it.
Yeah, and I think, um, part of the, one of the problems or realities with the fire station is it's been sort of subject to, um, many years of delay and the couple of years of number of capital projects being put on hold during COVID, put that whole project in a question mark. So, um, looking at what the pro, and I would certainly defer to Dr. Smith, but looking at the program that the fire department is looking to deliver from that location, um, building something that we have the budget for doesn't accomplish it. And so between trying to meet the program needs and then the 2023, 24 budget realities and this waterline component that was not contemplated at the front end, um, has, has put us in a place where we are.
Mr. Sanders?
What I can also add to that is, um, the fire station has been identified as a priority for quite some time. And it, as, uh, Crystal just mentioned, it's, it's been sitting and sitting. And once the water main was discovered as an issue, we spent a great deal of time trying to figure out, was there a different way that we could address that particular item? And we've exhausted all options, uh, including having looked at art, thinking that that might be an eligible expense. And we have since found that we cannot use that funding source to address that $600,000 expenditure. And then the cost, the cost increase for actually looking at, um, updating the cost is where the other 600 came from. So that 1.2 is a true hard number is what it's gonna take in order for us to get started on the station soon, because if we delay any further, it'll go up again more than likely.
I appreciate you, um, both of your due diligence.
One item on the unfunded list I call out, uh, that energy savings performance contract costs 5 million, pays $333,000 a year. Um, as I recall, uh, last time we did a big bond issuance, Ms. Hamel said, a $10 million bond is about $660,000 of debt service per year, uh, for 20 years, right? So it, it pretty much exactly pays for itself. Uh, the biggest problem is that it uses up 5 million debt capacity. Um, I wouldn't recommend that it be out at this time, but if we were to get that referendum, um, I would, I would certainly want to see that because obviously, uh, it pays for itself pretty much exactly. But you save a lot of energy, it's good emissions-wise, and then after that payback period, uh, that's $333,000 in cash for parking every year. One item I'd like more details on, uh, is that cat park and ride. Um, I had not heard about this before I saw this. I did a little bit of research. I see a Wendy's land acquisition in the six-year plan for the state. Um, I like the amount of, uh, funding matching. I don't really see the need for the park and ride, and it sounds like it's in the county and serving county people. Um, why is that even on us instead of the county? Um, could we ask the county to fund that instead? Would just like to know what that is really. Also, if we short bridge inspections, are we gonna have a bridge collapse? Those are my comments, man.
Do you have anything for those, Ms. Hamel?
Yeah, so just, um, on the cat park and ride, just keeping, uh, we'll get you some more information. But I do just want to clarify, that was just a request, it's not anywhere. Um, and so it's not in the CIP or, you know, I think there were a bunch of questions, um, you know, to be determined with that. And on the bridge inspections, um, you know, as with all of these things you're talking about, one of the things that I think will be helpful for you all, um, and we'll be getting this material to you for the, uh, public hearing is just to reaffirm balances in some of these accounts. Um, it's, so that will help you answer some of these questions, I think.
Thanks.
Mr. Freese, uh, you've been quiet tonight. Any words of wisdom to help goddess?
Uh, no, sorry, not this time, uh, just listening and taking notes for the next meeting.
Thank you.
How is something like inspections even a capitalizable expense? I don't, that seems like a real anom- anomaly.
Yeah, I think again, this is, um, you know, been an item that's been in the CIP for years. Part of it is accumulating funds to be able to pay for these, um, and it is funded with cash. So, um, it's, it's primarily in there for its accumulation function, I would say. And it also, I think, leads to sort of a broader question of, you know, a potential CIP ad.
How do you mean?
Uh, you know, if the inspections, uh, render some need for a bridge replacement, that would eventually be a capital project.
Well, it certainly wouldn't be paid for out of what's allocated for the inspections.
No, no, but I'm just saying, uh, you know, that account is for inspections only and it's funded by cash. And so it's basically in this, it, it is an anomaly in the CIP. But again, there are other reoccurring accounts that are in the CIP that are funded by cash, and it's just a way to designate those funds.
And last thing I'll say is, I, I would be very disappointed if between now and the CIP hearing, we were to hear that the city, uh, made, committed to a large expenditure out of that parking structure fund in order to use those funds to port, pare down two businesses um, in order to preserve garage parking that we have never been able to document a need for.
Yeah, so right now there's only $644,000, uh, available. Um, and you know, none of that would happen without a council action.
Additional discussion on this item?
I have like, uh, I guess, the, something that doesn't sit well with me is, um, I guess it's more of a caution against hitting our bond capacity. I know we have to do the school reconfiguration, but it just seems pretty risky to tie up ourselves for the future. Hopefully that, you know, the, the sales tax or however, we're gonna fund this works out. And if we have to do, um, increases in the real estate tax, I want to also, I think this was said earlier, it's just a robust tax relief program to go along with it.
So question about the logistics of that, um, if we, um, if, if, if we recommend and council accepts our recommendation to increase the real estate and sales taxes, does that then have to go before the public? And does the public have to vote on that as well? Or does council have, uh, carte blanche on both of those taxes?
It, it would have to go back to, um, city council. There would have to be a public process before that tax could be implemented.
But is there a refer, if, is there a referendum? Does, does, does the public get to vote on this or is this council, is council the sole arbiter?
I think, and, um, Chris Engel, um, if you're still on, you may jump in if you need to. I believe that the statutory process, um, has been, at least for other localities, you get the statutory authority and then to implement it, a local referendum has been used. Um, uh, that's my understanding.
For sales tax.
So there would be, there would have to be a public vote. Council would, would accept our recommendation and then there'd have to be a vote to increase the, um, property tax and sales tax. So would you say?
No, that process would just apply to the, the portion of sales tax that council wanted to dedicate to, um, um, school, funding for school projects. The real estate tax increase that will generally be needed to cover all of these things in, in the budget is just subject to your normal annual public hearing process once the final budget is decided on and noticed for a public hearing.
And does Richmond need to weigh in on any of this?
The, the sales tax, um, for the schools, yes.
Okay, got it, thanks.
And also I would just offer that as of right now, um, we're not looking, there's not necessarily a proposal on the table to do that for 23, but probably for 24.
Even, even for the general assembly or for?
So all the general assembly work needs to happen. I'm talking, I'm speaking of the request for a tax increase. That, those dollars as currently, as the CIP is currently proposed are not needed in 23, they're needed in 24.
Got it, for the real estate tax option.
Correct.
Additional questions and comments on this topic?
I would just say, Chrissy, wow, lots of hard work. I, I, I am grateful. I hope, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well. This is, this is not easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you.
I believe we are ready for public comment. Last call before public comment? I think we're here. Um, who do we have with us?
That would be me. Um, all right, if you'd like to speak to the commission at this time, please click the raise hand icon in your Zoom webinar. If you're joining us via telephone, press star nine, you'll have three minutes to speak. All right, Peter Krebs, you are on, can you hear?
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Sound great.
Great, I'm on like, in my car, not driving, on my way to cheer on the CHS basketball team starting its new season. Uh, go Black Knights. So I ju- I just wanted to take a quick second to, to remind everybody that really the, the planning commissions, if you're, you only have one job, it's to be the shepherd of the comp plan. And, and we're super excited about, you know, the good work, the hard compromises and really, you know, the excitement about having this new comprehensive plan. And it talks about what it's gonna take to be a livable community. It talks about parks, it talks about sidewalks, it talks about affordable housing. Um, but this budget doesn't really affect, I mean, doesn't really reflect, uh, what the comp plan says in that way. It's, it's almost kind of oddly, um, divorced from it. So, um, I know that there are a lot of hard choices, but we can't pass the comp plan that we worked so hard for and then have a zero sidewalk budget. That's just a terrible, terrible look. Um, you, you guys are looking for, uh, new things to, to put some funds into. I would definitely underline the idea of, you know, putting three or, I think the department request was 600,000 for sidewalks. Um, additionally, I think that, uh, parks and rec lump sum is a pretty good flexible place where money could go to be used for, uh, forestry of various kinds. It could also be used for, um, uh, land acquisition and, and other opportunities that come up that we can't necessarily, um, predict. So I, I would just recommend, um, moving some, some monies out of the parking garage, we're not gonna need it. And sidewalks and parks are, are great, great places. And, um, I, I guess that, that's my main comment. Uh, we have a, a public hearing in two weeks if I recall correctly. So I'm pretty sure you'll get some good additional wisdom from the public at that point. But great work tonight, uh, great work, uh, so far, and, um, let's go Black Knights.
Let's go. Next, please.
I'd like to speak at this time, please click, raise hand or press star nine if you're joining us via telephone. Mr. Chair, there are no more hands raised.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move the adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, thumbs up, please? I got those thumbs, have a wonderful, wonderful holiday, y'all, thank you very much.
So guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.